Today is Monday, August 21st, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Councilmember Bucelato?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Walter? Here. At this time, we will start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. At this time, we'll go ahead and open our call to the public. I do have a speaker request for the public comment. Mr. Kurt Nelson, you may come to the podium. Kurt Nelson is here for a 9-9 pancake breakfast, and he is a spokesperson for Florence Just Serve.
Thank you for having me. This year, we're trying to initiate a first responders breakfast to commemorate 9/11 and to kind of generate a spirit of remembrance for that. We'd like to do this each year, but this year, we're having it on September 9th, which is a Saturday, and it's a free pancake breakfast to the, open to the whole community. We'd like to honor the first responders, and in doing so, we'd like to do that by getting the community together to remember what 9/11 means to the next generation. So with that in mind, we would like to specifically invite you, Mayor Walters, to come lead the Pledge of Allegiance to open that Saturday morning, hoping that you can accept that invitation. I know this is kind of public, but we'd like to offer that invitation to you.
Absolutely. I will put that on my calendar, and also the rest of our council, if you can attend, we would be happy to help in any way.
Perfect. I think everybody's been invited, from what I understand, and so, but we would, we would really appreciate this, the community's involvement in this, and like we said, we've never done this before, so we don't know if it'll turn out well or not, but with the community's involvement, we hope to make it better and more commemorable each year. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. And where are you holding it, just so everybody is?
Oh, it's going to be at the Presbyterian Church parking lot on Butte Street there, so that it's right in the middle of town. We will be putting up some informational signage, both here at the Presbyterian Church, but also, we've been given permission to put up a sign out on Hunt Highway in front of the fire station number two, I believe it is, so we'll be putting those up this week. And anybody, everybody's invited. Hopefully, we'll have enough pancake batter to go around, but we'll do pancakes till we run out of batter.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherry Har, I see you're online. If you hang on one moment, we'll get you open to speak. Okay, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. About a month ago, I had expressed some displeasure with bulk pickup and that I had not received anything from staff. I want to apologize because Carl Dudding did send me something. Unfortunately, it did go to my junk mail, but I wanted to publicly apologize to him. I apologized to him via email, and I also spoke to Mr. Martin as well to let him know that I did receive something from Carl, but I wanted to express to all of you my apologies because he did respond timely. And not only that, what we're going to do is because my trash, the bulk trash wasn't picked up, and it was my fault because we didn't have it bundled properly, but what we're going to do now, and again, Mr. Dudding, I appreciate your quick response, is that there will be like a little door placard that will indicate why your bulk trash was not picked up, so that way you're just not thinking like what I thought was, why didn't they pick it up? So the communication will be there between community members and the trash can place, I forget the name of the company that picks it up now. So I wanted to again apologize and tell him thank you so much for his quick response. My other concern for tonight is on the town website, when you go to, you know, join the meeting for tonight, the link was not there. You actually had to hit the agenda, go into the agenda to get to the link today, and last Thursday, we did not receive, I'm signed up to get notifications, and last Thursday, did not receive any notification on the agenda and the packet that we normally get on Thursdays. We did not receive any. Myself and another community member did not receive it. So just FYI, that communication, if something's going to change, that we know where to find the link. Thank you, Councilwoman Bucelato, for letting us know how to get on, otherwise myself and another community member would not have been able to join the meeting tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Are there any other speakers this evening? Okay, we're closing the first call to the public. Moving on to item six, which is a presentation. Presentation on a draft capital improvement projects website allowing for better project information and progress transparency, Mr. Carl Dudding.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we wanted to give council a demo and a tour of the capital project information portal, as well as receive feedback and direction from council. The capital project public informational tool is a product, part of the product of the capital budgeting software council approved last year and that we use to develop the FY24 This website is open to the public. The website is florenceaz.gov/cip. The goal here is to have one force that public or council can go to, to see what is happening in the town as far as capital projects, what is the current status of those projects, the estimated timeline, the budget amount, the actual, actual cost, and again, just some provide some overall transparency to the public. We started with six projects to build out, and this is the landing page, and you'll see over here on the left, the six projects that we started with. You could sort these as it grows by water project, streets, wastewater, and if you want to click on a project, you just click on it or right-click, it'll open up the project page. Anybody can sign up for project updates over here on the right. They just enter their email address. They don't need to create an account, and it'll add them. So anytime somebody goes in and updates this project webpage, they'll get an email with the link to go and view those. So on this project here, SU88, that's the project code, is our South Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion Headwork. There's a description here. Next section is a project updates. So we envision this every month. The project manager will go in here and update and build a living document. The project timeline, these are five pretty common project milestones, design, procurement, council approval, start, and completion. And so, the manager will go in here and fill out their projections, and then as things change, they can go in here and put revise, add notes, very fluid. Project budget, most budgets have four types. They have design, any kind of real estate, if we have to get right of ways, utilities, and then construction. It has the projected expenditures, this is the budget, the funding sources, where these dollars are coming from, expenditures, life to date, and then a phase that the project is in, as well as the project manager's name, and then map. One thing we know, and we talked about, and town managers stress this, is to commit to something like this, we've got to keep it updated. Nothing worse than putting something out for the public, and it sits there. And so, when we design our page, we decide, you know what, we're going to put a month at the top, just to make sure, you know, it stands out if we're not doing our part. The project managers have direct access to update this website. They won't be having to send an email to anybody. They go right in there and update their project, you know, they, they're the subject matter. So with that answered, any questions or feedback you might have?
Councilmember Cortez?
Well, that is a beautiful website. Here are my concerns. So we have See Click Fix, or whatever it's called, that we can't seem to get people to keep it up to date, put accurate information, even just updated pictures. I read through our managers' reports that include our department heads' reports, and most of the time, they're just copy and pasted. So I'm concerned that this is just going to be another version of copy and paste, and if we're going to spend money and do things like this, we need to make sure that we are all committing to do the job that we're being asked to do, because the last thing I want to do is put another thing out there for our citizens to look at and find nothing, just find, keep finding the same information, no updates. So it's beautiful, and it'll be nice, as long as everybody's going to actually keep it up to date like they're supposed to, and if they don't, I want to hope that the manager has a plan in place for when we're not, because this is one of the biggest complaints in our community right now, is we're spending money, but we're not actually doing what we're saying we're spending the money on. So that's going to be my piece of advice.
Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
Sort of a piggyback on that, but I do want to clarify some points. This is powered by ClearGov, so we've already paid for this program. It's not an additional cost, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for the public. And then also, along with the notation of keeping it updated, since you said, it sounded like the project managers are going to be updating each project, is that correct? Who will ultimately be responsible for making sure that those project managers are in fact, would that be the town manager, or is there somebody else that's going to be going in periodically to review that?
I'll defer to town manager.
Yeah, it's a team effort, right? But ultimately, I'm responsible to do that. So if you have those complaints or concerns, let me know. Jeff has been a part of this as well, so, and he's part of the other See Click Fix, and he can go in, and when he sees comments or lack of, he can help me leverage that and get new updates presented. So that's the plan.
And I apologize, when you scrolled down and I saw the project manager, was that somebody internal here, or is that an external contractor?
Correct. That's our senior engineer on this project.
Okay, perfect. I didn't catch the name last time I saw it. Okay, perfect. And then, so yeah, just making sure it's updated, that's fantastic. I think this will give us another opportunity for us to progress along with the communication between the communities, so I appreciate that.
Vice Mayor?
The one thing I'd like to see is...
Recording in progress.
The, where we have the current phase of the projects. I like that idea. I like the fact that you can see what phase they're in. What I'd like to see is maybe something at the site that shows people, this is where your tax dollars are going, this is what phase we're in. Like, you know, there's a lot of other cities that do it, and you know, you're, a lot of times, the citizens don't see what we're doing out here as far as CIP. They don't know where their money's being spent. So if there's a sign that says, this is what we're doing, this is how much we're spending, this is what phase we're in, I think that would help the citizens know what we're doing out here. So something, not everybody has access to, to the computers and stuff, so if we can do something at the sites, and that's all.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Dudding, for that presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is adoption of Resolution Number 1879-23, which is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, accepting grant funds from the Gila River Indian Community on behalf of the Penale County Historical Society in the amount of $5,800. Item B is authorization to purchase two Phoenix G2 alerting systems from the U.S. Digital Designs Inc. in an amount not to exceed $53,734.43. Item C is acceptance of data access exchange agreement between the Arizona Department of Transportation and the Town of Florence for acceptance of accident reports. Item D is approval of donating 22 SCBA frames, 86 cylinders, 37 masks, two complete RAC packs, and a box of various pieces and parts to the Mexican Consulte. Item E is approval of donating two SCBA frames, two cylinders, and two masks to the Penale County Historical Museum. Item F is adoption of Resolution Number 1876-23, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Arizona Governing Board Designating the Chief Fiscal Officer for Officially Submitting the Fiscal Year 2023 Expenditure Limitation Report to the Arizona Auditor General. Item G is approval to enter into a contract with the International Board of Credentialing and Continuing Education Standards for Autism Certification Training for All Town Staff in an amount not to exceed $8,061. And item H is to accept the Register of Demands ending July 31st, 2023, in the amount of $5,498,65 and 5 cents. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody in the public or on council that would like any item removed at this time? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is our unfinished business ordinance number 728-23. This is for discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the Town of Florence, Penale County, State of Arizona pursuant to provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona Revised Statutes and Amendments thereto by annexing 37.091 acres of land comprised of Penale County Assessor's Parcel Number 200-24-009H, also referred to as Parcel II in Section 25, T4SRAE of the Gila and Salt River Base and Meridian, Penale County, Arizona, which is contiguous to the existing Florence Town Limits on three sides, establishing 37.091 acres of single residential ranchette, R1R zoning, effective September 21st, 2023, Annexation Number 2023-01. The public hearing was held on April 17th, 2023. The first reading was held on August 7th, 2023. Ms. Barcela Parnitas?
I feel like I don't need to do a presentation at this point with that mouthful, but I'll go through this anyway.
See, your pictures, they mean so much more than the words.
That's in Penale County now. We want to bring into the Town of Florence. There's the AP number, APN number, as stated in the agenda item. There it is, and the surrounding zonings is PUD, or the Anthem Merrill Ranch, as well as some other PUDs, and then you have B2 down here. We understand the approximately, the size is 37.091 acres, shares three boundaries, meets all the qualifications that the state has put forward to annex this into the Town of Florence. There is a single owner for this piece of land, and I will reiterate, in the packet, it says that some communities put in this annexation, they want to build manufactured homes. That is not true anymore. They took that back. They're no longer looking, developing at this, this piece of parcel, or piece of land. So that's not going forward at all. However, the landowner still wanted to annex the property, so he moved forward with the annexation itself. There will be a rezoning from general rural to single-family ranchette. The owner plans to rezone this in the future. The next steps, once the second reading and action takes place, is the annexation will be filed with the county recourse office after a waiting period of 30 days. So a vote no would mean that this annexation would not move forward, and a vote yes is the adoption of the ordinance that was put forward on the agenda, as well as the movement of the 30-day waiting period and their recordation with the Penale County. Are there any questions?
I do not see any questions, so with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 728-23 as read.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine is new business. 9A is discussion approval disapproval to appoint Addison Atwell to the teen council with a term to expire October 1st, 2025. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, on August 9th, 2023, the teen council did meet, conduct interviews, and they had one application, and this is who they are recommended, recommending. Just remember, we have two alternate positions that are still available if anyone would like to participate. We have our council member liaisons, Mayor Tara Walter, council member Cortez. I would defer to you if you have any other comments you'd like to make.
No additional comments? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item 9A.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is discussion approval disapproval to appoint Karina Cardona, Chris Reed, Dennis Peterson, Ed Ortega, Joe Ruiz, Karen Wall, and Kathleen DeRosa to the Florence Memorial Park Ad Hoc Committee. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, I'm presenting this on behalf of the appointing committee. That would be councilmember Bucelato, councilmember Maldonado, and of course, our staff liaison, Paul King. They received 18 applications, and they reviewed and considered each and every application. Based on those applications, there was a request to make sure that we had every area within the community represented, and at the end of the interviews, they selected who would be interviewed. At the end of the interviews, this was the unanimous decision to move forward with the recommendation. Tonight, all three of your appointing members are here. That's councilmember Bucelato, and councilmember Maldonado, and Mr. Paul King. I would defer to them if they have any other comments they would like to add for the record.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that did apply and those selected. We're excited to get started and get some work done. Everybody came in very energetic to the interviews, and I feel like this is going to be really good for our town, and we're all excited to start. So thank you for everybody that helped make that possible.
I'd also like to echo what councilmember Bucelato just said. Thanks to everybody that put their application in. Congratulations to those that made it, and to those that didn't make it, you should be getting a letter here soon. And like I said, work's only begun, so thank you.
Thank you both for leading this effort. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Karina Cardona, Chris Reed, Dennis Peterson, Ed Ortega, Joe Ruiz, Karen Wall, and Kathleen DeRosa to the Florence Memorial Park Ad Hoc Committee.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and thank you to everyone who applied and is serving. Item C is discussion approval disapproval to enter into a cooperative use contract with Hill Brothers Chemical to purchase water treatment, water treatment chemicals in an amount not to exceed $180,000. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a contract that we come in front of the council each and every year for the chemicals for our water and wastewater treatment plants. This year, where I think we're, believe we're asking for a three-year contract with two one-year extensions, and in the RCA, it is stated that the amount is 180,000, but unfortunately, in the contract, it is $160,000. So I want to clarify that the amount is 180,000 and ask permission for the contract to be revised to match the RCA amount. I believe that occurred late, and then it just kind of got missed in my QAQC process. With that said, this is a cooperative contract to guarantee us the lowest price based on the larger needs of a larger community and us being able to get those prices at this time with this vendor.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. Council, are there any questions? Seeing no such questions, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item 9C.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. This is our second call to the public this evening. Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Joe Ruiz.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I just would like to express my joy listening this evening and knowing that I was selected and appointed now to an ad hoc committee meeting concerning our local cemetery. I spoke with Lisa about possibly striking something like this up, oh, maybe a year ago or so, and it didn't come to fruition, but here it is now, and I am so elated, I can hardly wait to get to work with the group of people that were selected and the two council people that will be over this committee, and also with the liaison. I appreciate him very much as well. But just wanted to say that and thank the committee for considering and selecting, and it sounds like this particular group's going to be a real good one and a fun one. So congratulations to all of us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening? All right, closing the second call to the public. Thank you for everybody who is attending and participating. Next is our call to the council. Oh, town managers report. I'm so sorry.
No, you read my mind. See, that's how it works. Yeah, a bunch of internal meetings, as you can imagine, so I don't have anything to report, so thank you.
I checked it off, and I went right to the call to the public, so I apologize. It was unintentional. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Larson?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Cortez?
I think it's storming right now. I can hear it, and I just wanted to say, Ms. Ruiz, I absolutely loved hearing your wind chime while you were speaking to us. It was music to my ears. I love wind chimes. Those are my favorite, and it changed my mood. Thank you.
Football season is back. Everyone should be very happy about that. Florence Gophers won Friday night. won Friday night, smashed the team. Football is back.
Make a note for Monday nights as well. Councilmember Butcholato?
I don't have anything tonight. I just already spoke about the ad hoc committee, and that's what I was going to speak on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maldonado?
I'd just like to really look forward to the League of Cities next, next week. Hope to learn a lot of stuff and bring back some good info. And also, I'd like to thank ALA and their staff for helping my two exchange students, Ness and Julia. So, thank you to ALA for making them feel at home here, here in Florence. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Well, we did the ribbon cutting ceremony with LGI, and if you're a first-time home buyer, go check them out. They're got some pretty good deals to help you out. They're helping out a lot of first-time buyers. So, that's a good thing that we've added to our town to help people move in. And on the, one of the agenda items that was online, it said agenda number eight A was actually on here as seven A, so that needs to be corrected. Aside from that, that's all I have.
Thank you. I do not have anything this evening. I had notes all written down from meetings that I had attended, such as the PR TA and transportation, but I'll provide a written update. And with that, we do have an executive session, so we do need a motion to adjourn to that.
Make a motion to return to executive session?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are dismissed.